On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome everyone here tonight. And if you would, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for all the silence please.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please sit at your place. You will have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Some of the motions by Mr. Farrell, second by Mr. Davidson. All those in favor of that to be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Are there any additions to the agenda? No additions. Would anyone like to remove any item from the consent agenda so that it might be discussed for discussion? If not, do we have a motion to approve it? Motion by Mr. Clark, second by Mr. Jordan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passed. Dr. Combs.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The plan that we're presenting tonight is the culmination of much research, collaboration, and thought. We've used input from Laboner, CDC, state and local health departments, the Tennessee Department of Education, the State Board of Education, local county governance, our local EMA director, parent representatives from each school, teacher representatives from each school, and even the myriad of comments posted on social media, which we have looked through. Just today, I even reviewed our plan with Senator Rose and Representative Moody. Thus far, all of these contacts have been extremely helpful and cited positive feedback on this draft. As a matter of fact, a representative from the Department of Education said it was one of the best plans that she's seen up to this point. So here is our proposed schedule. After an additional week of training for our faculty and staff, students will return to schools on a staggered schedule beginning Monday, August the 17th. After three weeks of this staggered schedule, we are planning to return to a full schedule on Tuesday, September the 8th. That is the day immediately following Labor Day. Even then, distance learning will still be an option for students who do not want to attend in person. My colleagues will discuss the plan in more detail momentarily. However, I want to take this moment that you've granted me, Chairman, to make a couple more observations first. Number one, I'm very aware that this COVID-19 scenario has caused quite the conversation across our state and this county. While many are focusing on politicizing these events, I need you to know that my focus is simply on getting our kids back to school. The obvious reason is because they're missing out on teacher-led instruction. But not interacting with their peers in the school setting, as they've done in the past, can also be detrimental. Even the American Academy of Pediatrics has expressed that concern. We are working toward getting these young people back to school. That's the plan. Number two, I also need you to know that all plans will continue to be somewhat fluid and contingent upon local ordinances and state guidelines as we move forward. As you also know, some of these are in a constant state of flux. The CDC has even delayed their guidance on reopening schools until next week. And TWSAA has not yet come to a decision regarding how we move forward with fall sports. So again, there's going to have to be some fluidity to this plan. As of this morning, Tipton County has experienced 662 confirmed COVID-19 cases. 504 of those have recovered, 33 were hospitalized, five individuals have died. Tipton County has 153 active cases right now, at least as of this morning, and nine new cases since Tuesday. One last reminder, Governor Lee's executive order that extended the state of emergency did not apply to schools. I know I've shared that with all of you, but I want to make sure that everyone out there knows that that extension did not apply to schools. Thank you for being a part of this process and for being so supportive, and hopefully you will see the logic in the plan that is presented to you tonight. Unless you have questions, I'm going to introduce Dr. Byrd in just a moment, and she is going to go through the instructional portion of this draft plan that we have, unless anybody has a question for me.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind. Well, first of all, let me say thanks for sending the draft plan out to us as board members so we could have a good opportunity to review it. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And my other question was, I know this won't be delving into the down home specifics necessarily tonight, and the plan is much more involved in that.
Yes, sir.
So parents are wanting to see that. If we approve the plan tonight, how soon do you think it'll be on our Tipton County Schools website?
Thank you for that question. If the plan is approved tonight, if y'all like it and it's a plan tonight, or it's approved tonight, then we will put it on our webpage this evening. It'll be on there as quick as we can get it on there. It just awaits y'all's approval. Thank you. Anybody else have a question?
All right.
Dr. Byrd.
Thank you, Dr. Combs. Yes, sir.
If you look in your packet, you have a copy of tonight's PowerPoint if you want to follow along with this. For those in the audience, obviously, you can see it ahead of you. I'm going to begin, as Dr. Combs said, with the instructional component of our plan. And as we begin school, you can see that parents will have two options for their students. They can attend face-to-face or in-person, or their second option is to choose distance learning where they will learn from home. And I'll start with giving you just a brief, I'm not going to read the entire PowerPoint to you, but just a brief explanation of the face-to-face component. The face-to-face is what it sounds like. The students will be coming to school because, as Dr. Combs stated, our plan includes a staggered schedule. They will come every other day, either Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday, and then begin daily attendance on September the 8th. While they are at school, which we've noted as in-person learning, of course, the teacher will be instructing as always, and the teacher will also be assigning them work to do on the following day when they are not scheduled to attend in person. The work that they will do at home will be a combination of printed materials and online work, depending on whether or not they have home internet access as well as a device. And I wanted to make sure and note on our plan, because this is different from what happened in the spring when we had an unexpected shutdown. The work from the spring was optional, but these assignments, as you can see on the PowerPoint, all of these are required and mandatory and have to be turned in for grading and attendance purposes. And then if you shift your focus over to the distance learning option that we know through talking with parents, that there are some folks who are definitely interested in this, they want their kids, a part of Tipton County schools, but are a little hesitant, maybe their child's medically fragile or someone at home is, but they want to participate in distance learning. And we are prepared to purchase an online curriculum for them to use at home in addition to printed materials. If they don't have access, then it will just be printed materials. You'll also notice that distance learning students will have the option of changing to face-to-face at any time during the school year. Our goal is to get kids in school, as Dr. Combs stated. So if they want to switch from distance learning to face-to-face, then they have that option. And also, beginning next week, July 15th through the 31st, we have online registration or online enrollment, however you want to call it, that will begin, that we want all of our students who are returning, first through 12th grade students, to participate in. And parents are going to be asked, when they enroll their kids online, starting on the 15th, if they are selecting the face-to-face or option to the distance learning. A little bit more about the face-to-face. This is considered a hybrid approach, and I know that this is going to be a question that parents are going to ask, you know, how do I know which day my kid will come to school? The schools will notify parents of their child's schedule for those first three weeks when we're staggering. As far as the online curriculum goes, we are partnering with Edge Annuity, which is the company. The program is called Odysseyware for K-5, and it's called Edge Annuity for 612. That's the platform that we're using. And I will let you know that we have not received the contract from them. We have a quote from them, but no formal contract. We're still working on some professional development questions that have arisen on that contract. So as soon as I have that, I'll be sending it to you all for approval via email. Teachers will be trained on this online curriculum platform during those extra days of August in-service, as our proposed plan states. And our plan is for them to be trained those first few days and then to begin using it on August the 17th. Our students who are attending in person will also be trained on the platform so that they can use it at school, and those with access can use it at home. And also to let you know, it's not on the PowerPoint, but I did want to mention it, we have to submit what's called a continuous learning plan, or CLP is what the state's calling it, to the state by July 24th. And a lot of what we're presenting to you tonight will be in that plan. It's a little more extensive than what I'm sharing out loud tonight. But part of that plan is how are we going to start school, and then what would we do in the event of another shutdown? So we feel like the online component of Odysseyware and Edge Annuity, that by training our students on that from the very beginning, as well as our teachers, that we would be prepared to continue online learning in the event of a shutdown, should it be necessary. And of course, we know because of access that we would also have to provide printed Just to also make you aware, some other instructional resources that we have purchased or have designated funds for. We will be having extended learning or tutoring at schools, and that may look different school to school, depending on scheduling and needs of students, but just want to make you aware that that will be an option this fall. And also, we have purchased this summer 2,516 devices using local funds, USDA grant that you all were made aware of a few months ago, and then CARES Act money that we talked to you about last month as well. We will begin using those this fall. Now, understand that everybody across the state's ordering devices, so the timing on when those get in and how quickly we can get them out, that may be a concern. But the last we heard, and Kevin can correct me if I'm wrong, that we believe they should be shipping in early August. I figure someone will ask that. And our intent is to purchase additional devices. And then the last thing I want to talk to you about is in-service plans for August. We are, because we're moving school back a few days, and we'll have some extra in-service days for our teachers, and you can see, this is the list, again, I'm not going to read it to you, but this is the list of things that they will be training on during those extended days. Big focus on technology to get us prepared for online learning. And then lastly, one of the crucial things that they'll be trained on is CDC guidelines and reopening procedures. And Dr. Fisher and Ms. Sherry will be talking a little bit more about those. That's all I have to share with you. I know there was more information in the packet that I sent you, but I wanted to just give you a brief overview. Questions before Dr. Fisher takes over?
Has there been, Rebecca, has there been any interest in the Virtual Academy?
Yes, sir. We've had phone calls from parents saying, you know, I want my kids to stay in Tipton County schools, but I don't know that they're healthy enough. Or I spoke to a lady the other day that she had a family member that was sick, not wanting the child to bring something home from school. So yes, sir, we have had calls about it. So we're excited about being able to offer that to parents.
I got one thing. I got some parents complaining about why the kids can't go on Monday, Tuesday, be off weekends, and go Thursday, Friday.
So we talked about, you're talking about one group go Monday, Tuesday, and then another group go Thursday, Friday?
Yeah, be off on the weekends for cleaning and do whatever.
We had some discussion about that with principals and Dr. Combs and Dr. Fisher. I don't want to step in your area, but, so feel free to speak up. But we had some conversations about that with the principals, and we feel like that there's a lot of time that would pass between, say, for example, the kids that come Monday, Tuesday. If they don't come back to school until the next Monday, a lot of time has passed between the instruction and what they're expected to do. And so we just felt like, for the instructional piece, that it was better to alternate days so that they could get instruction, work from home the next day on what they received their instruction about, come back for more instruction, et cetera. That was our reasoning and conversations with principals, but I don't know, Dr. Combs, if you want to...
That was, I think that was the number one reason that the principals, you know, discussed that, said that they would be concerned about that gap. But another thing, Mr. Jordan, and Mr. Glenn may speak to this later when he comes up, is that letting that building rest for basically three days instead of one day and then two days is a lot better to get it more thoroughly disinfected and ready for that group coming in again on Monday. So it is actually something that we looked at, yes, sir, because we had some of those questions, but we just thought this would work better.
I talked to some of the teachers that, I guess in the Drummond area, most of them I've talked to, and they really like the way you set up now, about the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. You know, I mean, the kids going to four days and then being off on that Friday, they seem like they like it. But like I say, I got a few emails, listed one of them, and I got it. People were concerned why they couldn't do it a different way.
Yes, sir, I got that. And even when they're not there Friday, we'll provide, there'll be instruction provided, you know, for them as well that day.
Will there be extended learning or tutoring opportunities on those Fridays?
So our plan is to have some remediation. Students to come in on Fridays, but it will be in limited numbers, and that will be, the teachers and principals will identify the students who are at risk that need to come in on Fridays for remediation. But yes, sir, that's the plan.
Will they include virtual students as well, the ones that opt in?
Will they be coming in to the school?
Would they have that option?
We haven't...
If they need an extra help?
Good question. We haven't discussed that as an option. Our assumption is that if they don't want to come Monday through Thursday, probably not on Friday, because they would not be the only student in the building. That was our thinking.
Dr. Byrd?
Yes, sir.
Moving forward, I know we're all anxious to get this behind us.
We are.
Have you talked about offering this moving forward? In other words, all students will be face-to-face, but also they'll have these devices and this distant learning to review and bridge or whatever they need at home. Seems like a good time maybe to increase our technologies.
Absolutely. That is the plan. I'm sure Dr. Combs will be talking to the board in the next couple of months about monies to fund more devices. The state actually sent out, I don't know if it was last week or earlier this week, I have to forgive my memory, a program where they're going to, some grant money where they're going to match two-to-one devices. We buy three, they reimburse us for the third one. So we're looking forward to spending a little bit more money to buy some more.
I know as a parent, I would really enjoy being able to help my children more if I'd have had the technology. You know, the technology supplements a lot of what we don't know sometimes.
Right. Yeah, and along that lines, and I know we've had a lot of discussion about this here, and I'm sure you all have had with parents as well, and again, my colleagues can jump in and save me at any point. Just kidding. But as far as, you know, our goal ultimately, yes, is to increase our technology, but we know one of our challenges, as you know, is internet access. And we've been asked about hotspots, but the reliability of those is a concern. However, we know that, Dr. Combs, for example, has a meeting next week to discuss hotspots with the company. So that is a direction that we're looking, but moving forward. But yes, technology increasing it. That's the plan.
Let me throw this in there too. Man, I love that question. You know I do. I love that question. You know, if there's anything at all good, because it's hard to find something good to come out of this scenario, but if there is anything at all good that has come out of this, it's that it has pushed us in a direction that has made us uncomfortable in the past, and we need to start having virtual as an option for many things. And so, you know, this is going to be something that, you know, we're looking forward to being able to build on. Absolutely. It's a great question.
And I'll add too, Mr. Shipley, that if you remember our five-year strategic plan, one of our goals was to increase technology one-to-one, moving in that direction within the next five years. So I think this is actually going to push us a little quicker. So we're excited about that.
This is going to be a big jump in that direction. How many devices will we have now?
Total?
Yeah.
Oh, gosh. I don't know. I can get, yeah. Well, these devices though, when we give a count to you all, sometimes it can be a little misleading because some of the devices are desktops that can't be, you know, moved, can't be put on a cart. But I know that we purchased 2,500 Chromebooks this summer, so...
That's what these are.
Yes. So they are, you know, they can be moved from class to class, carts, all those type things, so.
I'll say our original goal was to, our original goal was to equip at a minimum this year half our classes with classroom sets. That was our goal, just to get, you know, kind of a grand figure. But we're going to be beyond that. At the end of this year, we'll be beyond that, I think. Once we do the additional purchases and the purchases now, we're going faster than what that original goal was.
That's roughly 5,500 devices, right?
Oh, we have 5,500 devices, easy. With the purchase that we have, that we have coming, easy. And then we're going to be moving beyond that. I'm not misspeaking, right, Kevin? That's right?
We have several thousand devices without it. That's the plan.
And I know, Mr. Clark, we used some grant money last year that you all approved. I know last year, in the spring, we bought 350 Chromebooks to put in classrooms. That was our 13, if you remember, we had 13 class sets. Early, it offers one in each building, so you take that 2,500 and add 350 more. So we're doing well.
Do you have any questions, Dr. Byrd?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have questions?
Yes, sir.
I was, you know, now, teachers won't be able to just get these kids on Odysseyware and so forth and turn them loose, right? I mean, there are schools out there talking about, I mean, they're going to have to be in constant communication with the kids. Because you look at a seventh-grade math student, for instance, trying to figure out what this virtual learning is trying to say. So that teacher's going to, you know, aren't the schools talking about using Zoom also and Google Classroom?
Absolutely.
Because, you know, parents are always saying, man, I don't know, I don't remember this math. I can't help him in that.
Yes. Yeah, and so, Google Classroom, NearPod, Zoom, I can't think of all the names of all the platforms that...
Microsoft Teams.
Yes, Microsoft Teams. But yes, I mean, so that we can, I think you're talking about the kids who are going to be learning from home. Is that what you're talking about?
Mostly, but I think, wait, yeah.
Yes, they will be available through those platforms.
I was thinking about the remedial day also. If parents, you know, if you didn't have kids coming in on the remedial time, would teachers have access to, you know, the Zoom and all that kind of stuff? Which brings the question, will we have enough of that type of technology? Let's say, let's say teachers wanted to make YouTube videos, introductory videos or whatever. Well, do we have enough cameras and things of that nature to accommodate that?
We will. We are in the process of, we just had discussion this week with Melissa Chipman, who's our instructional technology coordinator, I think that's her title, about purchasing additional cameras that are similar to what you may have at home, sitting on top of your monitor that's plugged into the, I believe it's plugged into the USB drive. So yes, we are looking at purchasing more of those per building. We're waiting to see the exact price, to see how many we can buy, but yes, that's the plan. We also, Mr. Vincent, and I don't know when we'll hear from, unfortunately, I don't know when we'll hear back, but we submitted a grant to USDA, it was called, I believe it was called USDA Distance Learning Grant a few months ago, and it was purely for distance learning classrooms, where we would have the equipment, additional promethium boards, cameras, all of those things to where the classrooms could be interactive with students at home. We haven't received word whether or not we're going to get it. Hopefully, we do. That would help us a lot.
And you know, a lot of teachers are going to have to be trained in doing all that as well, right? Because there's not a lot of people tech savvy out there like me.
Edge Annuity and Odysseyware though, don't they have educational pieces?
Yes. They have, yes, they have an instructional component, but the great thing is that the teacher can also record herself teaching mini lessons, and you can do it with a cell phone, iPad, camera, and you can drop it into that. I'm sorry?
Does the textbook tie into Edge Annuity or Odysseyware?
Well, it's the same standards, but it's, they're not the same company, no. Well, actually, I will, I don't want to say that they're not the same company, because the ELA curriculum that we adopted for six through eight is actually connected with Edge Annuity. It's called LearnZillion, but it's a branch off of Edge Annuity. But the elementary and the high school are separate.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that, the ELA, the new, new, very expensive ELA curriculum that we purchased and the teachers have been trained on. Will they be able to use that as well as the Odyssey?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, the plan will be to continue, we're excited, we know it was expensive, but we are excited about the reading program. So, I mean, the plan is to continue to use that. It has, part of the expense, quite honestly, is the consumable nature of this, because for the life of the adoption, we will get new materials each year. And so, no, I mean, even kids who are learning from home, because it's consumable, they can continue using that at home. And Ms. Shipley and I were talking, and she may want to jump in, but there's an online component to all three of the adoptions we made in ELA. So yes, they have been trained, and yes, our intent is to continue using it.
And we have enough books and other take-home materials that kids who are doing virtual only will be able to have access to everything they need?
We, when we make an adoption and a purchase, we base it on the projections for next year, and those projections included all students that previously attended. I mean, you know, you have to project as best you can, but yes, short answer, yes. It was CKLA, Mr. Vincent, the CKLA does have a student login for every student, 335, and it has a classroom login for K through two students. And then they also have something that they came out with today due to COVID-19 called a hub for students also that we're researching.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I got one. Okay.
I know you're doing, I mean, this is all doing the basic math and all that. What about the other teachers that do, teach the basic classes in math, reading, and all that?
You're talking about the online program?
How does this affect them that are teaching the music programs and extracurricular sports and things like that? I mean, those teachers, how does this, how does this affect them for us?
So if I'm understanding what you're saying, Edge Annuity, that's the six-through-12 program, it's not just the basics. It has, and I could have, I can still provide, I can send it to you through email, the course catalog of what they, what courses that they offer through their platform, and it's pretty extensive. There's foreign language, there's CTE. So most teachers will be able to use it. As far as music and PE, I think you said, I don't believe that they are on there, but they can take advantage of the other platforms such as Google Classroom, Thrivist, things like that. Does that answer your question? Sort of.
And there'll probably be video in some lessons too. You know, the expectation is that the students, you know, will still have access to those fine arts programs, not just core classes. But, you know, it's, we're kind of in that time where we're going to have a lot of folks that have to learn how to do some things differently. So there are going to be a lot of things they post online, some are PE and health teachers and art teachers and music teachers, they're going to do a lot of those things that they pull in, aside from their normal curriculum or even what they would use on a program like Edge Annuity. So, I mean, honestly, we're kind of excited about that. It's going to stretch those boundaries a little bit, and we're going to have to think outside the box a little bit.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Dr. Byrd.
You're welcome.
Dr. Fisher, Director of Fisher Operations.
Thank you. Good evening. As we review the school reopening plan, I'm going to share the operations side of all we do. And this plan covers how we will respond to the many different aspects of daily school life of our students, our teachers, and our staff throughout the school district during the pandemic. Our goal is to provide a safe and supportive instructional learning environment for everyone. Of course, this will not be a small task, however, we do accept the challenge. As you look at the PowerPoint, the central office here, of course, this would also include our central office too and our media center visitors. As you were screened, as you came in tonight, we will be conducting screening, but our visitors also will be limited to one family member coming in. We're going to be asking for appointments, and we're going to require individuals to wear masks and sanitize as they enter the building. As we look at personal protective equipment, our janitorial staff, Mr. Turner's going to talk about this, but we will provide increased cleaning efforts for frequently touched surfaces. Also, all of our hands-on classrooms, like our library, the computer labs, all of those will be cleaned routinely. And at this point, no playground equipment access will happen until after Labor Day or until there's a low-virus spread designation here in Tipton County. there's a low virus spread designation here in Tipton County. Um, we will be, uh, asking face coverings may be worn by staff and students. We will not be, uh, sharing objects. We want our students to, that will be discouraged. The use of our water fountains in our buildings, also, we're going to discourage that. And we're going to encourage our students to bring their own water sources with them to minimize the use and the touching of water fountains. Ms. Yarborough will also, uh, speak with you a little bit about some devices that we have found that will allow us to fill water bottles. So we're, we're also looking at that for our students. As we look at the layout of a classroom, some of the things that we think our parents will be interested in as well is that we want the students' desks to face in the same direction toward the front of the classroom, rather than facing each other, uh, with as much space between them as possible. Of course, at least six feet is what we are hopeful for. Or our students will be seated on only one side of tables. So these are the types of things that we will be sharing with our teachers for instructions on a daily basis. Once again, masks are encouraged, but they're not required to be worn in there, in the classroom. Um, assemblies of more than fifty students will not be scheduled. So this is something else that we will have to look at within our buildings. As we look at movement throughout the buildings, up and down the many different hallways in our schools, the flow of student movement throughout the hallways is going to be in one direction if possible. Uh, we will be attempting to make sure that there's six feet of distance between the students and the staff in the hallways. We will be providing physical barriers such as sneeze guards that are going to be placed at our reception desk. We're already working on that. Um, as well as there'll be physical guides throughout the building with tapes or signage, uh, to share with our students, six feet apart, and what that looks like. Guides for them along the way, the one-way routes in the hallways, arrows, and those types of things. We think that would be very helpful. When we look at food service and our meals, um, our cafeteria staff has already done a great job, but our food will be presented to the students to avoid multiple surface touches. So they won't be going through and selecting each item. They will already be pre-plated, individually plated meals. Um, and as you look at that, we'll have disposable food service items, such as all of the utensils and the dishes, um, yeah, utensils and the dishes. Social distancing will be maintained during meal service. Um, of course, food service staff is going to clean and disinfect all of the high-touch areas, door handles, light switches, phones, keypads, tray slides. They're already doing this, because throughout the summer, we've already had to do this since March. So our food service staff is already, uh, on point with that. And also, any food contact services will be, uh, cleaned before and after each use. When we look at our pre-K, our kindergarten, our first grade students, those students will be served in the classroom. So our cafeteria staff is going to actually take those meals down the hallways to those students. They're younger students, not able possibly to handle the small, the trays with the food, so we'll be delivering those to the classroom. Our breakfast will be prepackaged for all students. And then our second through twelfth grade students will be served meals in the cafeteria lines, but those will be pick-up and go. Um, remember the maximum of fifty students in the dining room area? That's the only way we'll be able to maintain that. But we do want everyone to know that all students will have an opportunity for a dining room experience. So it will not be that every student will eat in the classroom every day, but all of our children will have that dining room experience, because we feel like that is very important. Of course, hygiene and safety, don't have to lift that up. I think Glenn is going to talk about that, how important that is. Food service workers are going to be screened, as all employees will be screened each and every day upon their arrival to work, and their temperature must be below one hundred point four. And wearing masks or face shields or other face coverings will be required for all food service workers, just to make you very aware of that. When we look at visitors in our school buildings, um, parents, guardians will not be allowed, will not be allowed in school buildings, except for extenuating circumstances. And if that parent does enter, it'd be one adult per child. Of course, we're just going to encourage parents to set up those appointments. That's going to be very important for the school. Uh, and then, of course, the pre-screening that we have to do, all of that will be required. Masks will be required for all visitors to the school. There will be no gatherings of more than fifty individuals. And then, nonessential visitors, volunteers, and activities involving external groups or organizations will be limited. There's a tremendous amount of traffic that does typically come through our schools, so we'll be limiting that. Of course, individual schools will be making those decisions. When we look at our extracurricular and athletic activities, the locker rooms, the weight rooms, physical conditioning activities, um, those should be used with social distancing guidelines in place. All field trips are being discontinued at this point. Um, and the decisions for participation in competitions, which is a very important piece for our high schools, uh, but those decisions will be made collaboratively, uh, collaboratively, I'm sorry, by school administration, the club sponsor, and the district supervisor, to make sure that we are covering all of our bases for that. When we get to transportation, I have Mr. Jeff here. Uh, this is huge for us. Uh, we, Dr. Combs actually took us out to a bus, and I think it was in June, and placed us on a seventy-passenger bus. And so there were eleven of us that were safely able to sit on that bus socially distanced. So as we look at what we're going to do, we definitely want our buses, they're going to be cleaned and sanitized before and after each route daily. They will be equipped with all of the cleaning and disinfecting supplies and the hand sanitizer and gloves and mask. Our bus drivers and the monitors on the buses will be required to wear masks or other face coverings. And our bus drivers, of course, have to sanitize before, uh, the route begins. When our students load the bus at their bus stop, we are going to talk with our parents and teach them, as well as our students, to socially distance themselves from their peers while waiting on the bus. We know a bus stop is a great time for a lot of conversation. We also realize that our children are just coming back together, so there will be a level of excitement. So there's some training that we will have to do with our students. So that's one big piece that I, I think is very important. We want our students to load the bus, one student at a time. They're going to be given hand sanitizer on the bus. This is something that's very different as well. The importance of washing their hands or cleansing their hands is going to be important. And then students will sit, one student per seat, starting with seats at the back of the bus, and then fill the bus to the front. Our family members, siblings, and students in the same households will be allowed to sit together on the bus. Then once students, um, are seated, then they will be encouraged, if it's an individual student, to sit next to the window. Y'all driving the buses is a very hard and a very difficult job. So just placing the hand sanitizer on there and then, uh, the driver having the mask on, these are just some things that we have to definitely look at. Loading the buses with the students, uh, in the afternoon when they pick them up, when we go to the schools to actually pick them up. Our pre-K students will load the bus last in the afternoon. Remember, those are our four-year-old students, and they will always sit in the front of the bus in the morning and the afternoon.
So no bus, no mask required on the bus?
I hadn't gotten that part yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I hadn't gotten that part yet. On the bus ride, for our students, they should be seated for the duration of the bus route, keep their hands and feet to themselves. Uh, the bus driver, of course, will make sure the bus is well-ventilated as, as well as possible. But for riding the bus, face masks or other face coverings will be required for our students who will be riding the bus. Students should refrain, of course, from eating, drinking, and/or chewing gum on the bus.
If a student hops on the bus without a mask, will we be providing one?
Um, we have, we are receiving masks, uh, from the state, and yes, sir, I do believe we will be able to provide those masks.
Hey, if they hop on, they're going to hop right back off until they have the mask on.
Yes. Um, unloading students when they arrive to school, and this is going to be very important and a little bit different as well. Um, we, the unloading of buses will be staggered to minimize the mixing of students as they enter school. Many mornings, our students, pretty much, the buses arrive around the same time, so there's some staggering that needs to be done, because they cannot unload in the typical fashion. So that's one of the scheduling things that we have to work on. Uh, they will unload the bus one student at a time, starting at the front of the bus and then continuing to the back. Of course, the staff from the school will then take student temperatures and greet students as they arrive at the designated unloading area. Uh, we'll, of course, be looking for those temps. Students will be given hand sanitizer as they enter the building, and then they will report to their classroom. Uh, if a student does have a temperature or any signs of illness, the student will be given a mask and then escorted to a designated location for the nurse to contact parents and ask parents to come and take the student home. Any student that has a temperature and has been sent home will be documented for attendance purposes. So there are definitely some, uh, procedures that we will have in place to address attendance if a child does have to go home.
Can I ask you a quick question about that? The, uh, about the nurses going to the designated location with the student? Now, do you think a nurse at a school will be able to handle that? You know, I mean, what they're doing in the morning, they're giving them medication and doing this and that. And also, you know, if like three or four kids have a temperature or whatever, they'll all be in the room together? Is that the way it works?
We're going to have, um, Ms. Sherry is going to address that, because we do have what we're calling a wa- a waiting room or an isolation room, because we also will have those students that are diabetic or need their medication first thing in the morning as well. So the nurse will assist us here, but we will probably have staff members there as well. We do have one, I, I'm going to go ahead and say this, we do have one nurse, I think Dr. Combs shared that with you last month. We will have one nurse per school. So that's a, a good thing for us as well. And, um, as Dr. Combs, this is a, a working document, and so we'll have to look at it and see what happens. But remember, we're looking at temperatures of one hundred point four. So that would be the child that would be going home, or any other signs of illness. This is what we'd be looking at.
If you send a child home, do they have to have a negative test before they're admitted back to school?
I'm going to let Sherry address that.
Okay.
No. No. I mean, because if you, they may be just sent home for a strep throat or something, but we would ask for documentation that they've been to the doctor, or just like we do during flu season, you have to be fever-free for, it was forty-eight hours without medication. And this year, it will, it's seventy-two hours without fever. Um, but we won't require them to have a COVID test just because they have a fever. Uh, that would be up to a physician.
But our attendance clerks will, if we send one home with a fever, they can't come back for at least three days?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. We've already talked about our, our driver and bus monitor safety, and we're going to, of course, clean the buses before and after. Uh, and then any of our other students that we might need to assist, our, our bus drivers and monitors would also cleanse their hands and everything, once they take care of that. For our car riders, those students should be dropped off in their designated areas, which may train, change. Uh, we may have multiple lanes for screening for quicker, allowing for those children to be screened and processed. Um, stu- staff, once again, is going to take the temperatures, greet the students as they arrive at their designated drop-off area. But if that student has a temperature of one hundred point four or above, then the parent will be asked to take the student back home. So that's something else that we have. As far as our after-school programming, we do have, uh, after-school tutoring. We have our Project Succeed. There may be other tutoring that is set up. Those decisions for opening and scheduling all of the before and after-school programming will be made collaboratively by each school administration and supervisors, the grant administrator, or program coordinator. School age childcare, uh, we're looking at the registration for school age childcare will be capped at fifty children per site. All of our sites will be open, but we're going to, uh, look at capping that. Parents will need to specify if they're wanting to use morning care, afternoon care, or both. Um, and we looked at childcare guidelines, we looked at our CDC guidelines, we looked at what other school districts were doing. But we definitely have to look at the availability of staff, our space, and other considerations that may arise. The essential workers in Tipton County, that our parents will be given priority for those fifty slots. Um, but before an application is approved, the parents will have to submit verification of employment with a pay stub, employer ID, a letter from an employer. And, um, all registrations above the cap will be placed on a waiting list. And there will be no full daycare will be provided on those staggered days. So that's something else. We will not be able to provide care on those staggered days.
Dr. Fisher, how does that fifty children per site compare with what we normally do on a normal year?
We have three sites that we are a little bit concerned about. Um, Otoka would be one of those sites. Um, but our concern, our big concern right now is the availability of staff. We now have to call all our staff back to see if they are still interested in working. Many of them are receiving unemployment or have found other jobs. So we have to be able to staff at a one-to-ten ratio, and that one-to-ten, one of those individuals has to be the caregiver. Um, and those are state guidelines. Remember, our school age childcare is certified through state guidelines. And so we feel like we will be able to manage the fifty. The other thing will be, in terms of where we house them, we typically house them in the gym. And so finding an area for ten students, that's what the other side of what we have to do. So we will have to be able to socially distance and work with that group in those, uh, in the gym area. So when we look at fifty, we feel like we can come up with each corner, maybe, and then one in the center. That's how we looked at that.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Of course, caregivers have to be assigned to one group. They're not going to rotate. Um, we'll have to do a lot of training with them. Um, they, of course, will do health screenings with all of the workers prior to them coming to work every day. We, the groups may use the indoor and outdoor spaces, but remember, we can't use the playground equipment. Uh, so when we look at gym or cafeteria, also, they cannot rotate spaces. They have to stay in that space. Um, and so that, all of those are the different things we have to look at. And then, of course, in the event that a child is sick when they get to school age childcare, once again, they'll have to be isolated. Um, and we will be contacting the parents. Our morning check-in is very similar to what we do today, um, with the difference that we have to sanitize radios, door handles, light switches, and other high-touch areas. Um, and what our parents will actually be able to do, come into the site, there will be one parent that'll actually be able to come in. Children will be in groups of ten or fewer. Neither children nor caregivers will rotate. They will be assigned to the same group each day. And some of that is to support what will happen in the event a child tests positive, and we have to do any contract, any tracing. We need them to stay with that same group. Uh, they will have assigned materials. They will not share materials with others. Uh, they will have their own play equipment, and we've already been talking about this, like jump ropes, crayons, all of these things. We would have to purchase all of these things and place them in one bag for each child, and they would have their own individual supplies. And so children would not be able to bring toys, technology, or other items from home. Of course, our bathrooms will be making sure we get that cleaning done, and our staff will be trained on any new procedures. So, um, that is the operation, beginning of the operations side, which is huge. Sherry, Ms. Sherry Yarborough is our designated COVID-19 point of contact. Um, do y'all have any questions thus far? You want to wait and let Sherry step into the next piece?
Okay.
Uh, where, do you have a goal, or did I miss it? Do you have a goal as to when school age childcare may start?
We may have to open side-by-side depending on how many staff members we can get. We needed your approval first of the plan before we even began contacting our workers, because they have not worked since March. And so we have to rehire these individuals. We will not have to, there are some, we'll have to go back through background checks. All of these will be some of the things that, so we're ready to start, but we've not.
So the possibility of starting when school starts?
Yes, sir. There's a possibility of that. That's our goal. That is our goal, is to be available when we begin the stagger schedule. Yes, sir.
Dr. Fisher, have y'all, uh, considered, uh, talked about the commercial spray machine, disinfecting machine, that you get sprayed?
Uh, I think Mr. Turner's going to answer that question. Okay.
Uh, Fisher, moving back to the buses.
Yes, sir.
Uh, our biggest bus holds seventy students.
Well.
Which one holds eight?
Eight.
Seventy-eight. Seventy-eight, perhaps, is the biggest bus.
How many seats are on the bus?
That's three per seat.
Right.
Three.
How many seats are on our big bus?
Well, twenty-six.
So we'll be able to haul twenty-six students max at one time. Uh, now, the siblings will be sitting together, but so.
That's one reason.
Are our bus drivers going to run more routes?
They will be able to, with the, with the workforce that we have.
So once your bus fills up, that's just it?
Well, we're going to try to, starting out is going to be fine, I think, with the staggered schedule, is when we go back. And hopefully, things are better in that particular time. I think that's the hope of everything, of everybody, is, is hoping that it's better in that particular time, is why we.
that particular time is why we would go back, pull steam ahead anyway.
We're gonna encourage parents also to drop their kids off. That's another, that's why we feel like there may be an increased car rider pool. So that, that's another thing.
We do wanna encourage them to do, to provide transportation if they can, especially these first few months until we get that, that worked out, you know, we'll get a kind of a litmus.
Worked and progressed.
Absolutely. For one thing, note a number, I would say more than half of our bus drivers have another job. So they, they can't run routes all day because they have to do their other job. So we're gonna encourage folks to help with transportation. But honestly, on this staggered schedule, it's really gonna give us a good feel of what that's gonna look like so that we can try to make some adjustments and see what other options we have.
I can see some discipline, but.
Absolutely.
Children, can't get them on the bus.
Right. And hopefully we'll have that figured out before they get on there and they're not allowed to get on the bus. We're gonna try to have all that figured out ahead of time so that no one is like turned away from the bus. I mean, we'll have that planned ahead of time.
What about cleaning the buses? Who, I know we, they're gonna be responsible for sanitizing after the morning route and after the afternoon route?
Yes, sir. And in between, months or whatever.
We're looking at something too, there's something that kind of Mr. Davidson alluded to and I think Mr. Turner is gonna, wants to take it on a little bit further as far as schools and everything. But we may try to get a company to come in and spray the buses, what they showed us the other day, and I don't wanna get into all your spiel, but something that they did a test, for instance, on the Atlanta carp, the air, the carpet in the Atlanta airport. And after 36 months, it was still 97% effective in killing any germs that came into contact with that surface that had been sprayed. So we're looking at probably doing that prior to school starting if we can get everything lined up. And I don't think that's a problem, the cost is minimal when we look at the whole scope of things. So it's, it's on the high side, I think $50 a bus to get that done. And I think that's probably something that we need to go ahead and pursue.
Probably the busing is one of the, gonna be one of our biggest challenges is that getting the kids to school. So we, we definitely already.
How early they gather when they get, so early arrivals to school?
To the classrooms.
They're gonna go straight into the classroom. So are the teachers gonna have to?
And that will be dependent on each school, what they do, but there can be no larger gathering than 50 students. So principals will define where students are going to go. Remember, breakfast is gonna be grab and go, so they'll be able to grab their breakfast and go to those areas and eat. But each school will individually define how that's gonna work.
Okay. So does that mean all of our teachers are gonna have to get there?
I would say, I, I, I'm not gonna say that, no, sir, because we, we've talked about like we do during testing where one teacher may stand in the hallway and be able to watch four classrooms and count and monitor. I think, I think they're gonna be very creative with that and that's what we want them to do is to be creative with that. But they will not be able to gather in the gym. So those are the kinds of things we've gotta look at.
We missed a lot of time last spring. If we can make it up.
Dr. Fisher, I have a couple more questions for you, but it's almost all of them.
All right, hurry up.
I know, I'm making sure it's, I don't know if it's for you or not, or you're gonna have to put it on Ms. Sherry or whomever. So kind of what Steve was talking about, so you don't foresee any modification of working hours for staff at this point?
I can't say I don't see that. I think we all have to be in our, I stated that in the, well, I'm gonna state that at the end. I think we have to all be very flexible. And I think that's all of our staff as we look at moving into 2020, 21 school year. It's not going to look the same. And I think we all have to be flexible. So that's, I think that, and I think individual schools will make some decisions, talk with teachers, some will volunteer. I think there are a lot of different ways that, that we would look at what needs to happen and how it needs to happen. And even as you look at the pre-K and kindergarten, first grade students eating in the classroom, that's going to be very different. There'll be more trash that we will have to pick up. So the janitorial service, we will have to be ready for that. But that's a classroom, so a teacher's gonna have all this, you know, how do I deal with all of this garbage? So we all have to think outside of the box and be creative and yet help one another in order for us to make it through in a successful way. And the goal at the end of the day is to educate the kids. And so we wanna do that as best we can. So it may be a little uncomfortable. It's been real uncomfortable for some of us trying to make these decisions, but we, we're still looking at what's the best thing we can do for these students and so on. You know, we just hope everybody is willing to get on board.
All right, well, just a couple more. I noticed in our plan it says we'll provide adequate classroom cleaning supplies. Now, maybe Ms. Turner talked about that. I'm assuming that the, we will provide everything a classroom teacher's gonna need.
Yes.
Now, that classroom teacher, like the bus driver, I take it, is gonna be responsible for sanitizing between classes. Is that?
I think that, I'm gonna let the, I'm gonna let Mr. Turner kinda address some of that and it just depends because we're, we're probably not gonna be possibly changing as many classes. But desktops and things like that, I think, and I think our teachers already do some of that already. But there'll be some training and some teaching on what we need to do. We're looking at if there's any additional staff or anything like that that's needed. We have not, we have not defined that yet, but if we need to, I think we'll be ready to do that.
All right, just one more now, kind of on the same lines about who will provide what. I know that we're gonna have to be making for, for kids that don't have internet access and for off days work and things of that nature, each school and teacher, they're gonna be required to make a whole lot of extra copies, packets and things of that nature. And I'm just wondering, you know, I, I think each principal is responsible for their own copies of the building, I think, and their own funds. I'm just wondering, is there anything we can do financially to help them out to make sure that they're not a burden as far as doing what needs to be done in a uncharted water situation?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. The principals negotiate their own copier contracts. And those who have done a good job negotiating those contracts are not gonna have a problem with that at all. But some of those who have chosen other copier companies are gonna run into a problem because they have limits that some of the other ones don't. So we'll have to intervene in some of those cases to see what we can do to help. That's the best answer I have for that one. Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Dr. Fisher? Thank you, Dr.
I'll be back.
I know.
I'm a Terminator.
All right, good evening. Not gonna say this is a title that I've been wanting to have for all this time, I have a lot of titles, but never this one. Just to let you know that I work really closely with Department of Health, our Labaner nurses, I've been on a lot of calls, so I'm learning a lot about COVID-19. A lot of questions that come to me, I still have to call somebody else. I call the Health Department, they still have to call somebody else. So it's a lot of learning constantly about this. So we're just doing the very best we can to keep our kids and our staff safe and to be able to be at school. Any concerns that any parent has or any teacher has, they can call me, email me and, and we'll do the best to answer whatever questions they need. School operations, staying home when appropriate. This is a big deal and that's gonna take some education on for parents and we will start that immediately once this plan is approved. Letting parents know that they need to, need to watch their kids when they're at home. You know, don't send them if they're having any kind of symptoms or any kind of sickness that might have them turn around to be sent back home. We do know that attendance policies will be modified. We don't want to have to have kids in and out and in and out. You know, if they're sick, stay home, get well. If they're sick and showing signs of COVID-19, tested positive for COVID-19, awaiting results or running a fever of 100.4 or above, staff and students should also stay home if they have been exposed to people with COVID-19. Now, it is not the school's responsibility to determine who, who you've been exposed to. That is a Health Department determination. If we have a student or staff member that tests positive, the Department of Health will contact those who have been in close proximity to them and will decide whether they need to be quarantined or not. We'll talk about that some more later. Also, we will be doing a lot of education on hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette. Coughing in your sleeve, using tissues, using soap and water when necessary. There's been a lot of push for hand sanitizer. We have a lot of hand sanitizer, but we don't want overuse of hand sanitizer. We still want kids to be able to go to restrooms, use soap and water when necessary. Staff and families of sick students will be advised to follow the Department of Health COVID-19 guidance. We have that in our plan. Some of the stuff is long, 10, 12 pages long, but we will have everything pretty much concise for the school and you'll know exactly what to do if someone comes in and tests positive or calls somebody. I am the point of contact for the Health Department. I call them or they may call me. So, and then I will make contact with administrators and whoever is in need to know in these cases if anyone comes down with it. You had asked earlier about a, a isolation room or a waiting area. We will, every school will have a designated area for students who are sick. Students who come every day to the nurse for blood sugar checks or asthma, breathing treatments or something like that, they would be considered in the well room because we don't want those students to mix with those who are running a fever or who may have other symptoms. So nurses are going to be very busy because they will be having to kinda see after both places, but it's gonna take other people in the buildings pitching in to help. Because every school doesn't have access to the nurse's clinic and a waiting room right beside it. We don't know where in the buildings they're gonna be, but they're all working hard to get them close together. But those isolation rooms, hopefully, once a child is put in there, if they're running any kind of fever, having any kind of sick symptoms, as soon as they're in there, we'll be calling somebody to come pick them up. And hopefully they won't be in there very long. And we hope there won't be a lot in there together. This again is about the training. There's gonna be a lot of training on wearing masks for those kids who ride a bus, who need to learn how to wear a mask. If you're wearing cloth mask, how often do they need to be washed? If you're wearing disposable mask, how many days can you wear one till you need to get another one? Masks are gonna be provided by the state, but we are asking parents for bus riders, you may wanna provide your own mask that kids can take home, wash and wear again. We'll work hard on social distancing. We've already looked at getting the, and Dr. Fisher's already talked about the signage for the floors, the arrows, the spacing and things like that we will have for each school. Here we go with the supplies. Mr. Turner, if you wanna talk any on this, but I will tell you, we already have 288 non-contact thermometers. So those will be distributed amongst the schools. Every school gets one per 50 students. Cafeterias will have a thermometer, bus driver, I mean, there will be thermometers everywhere. So we, and they are the good ones that do the, that, you know, you don't have to put it in their mouth or anything, they, it was the non-contact. Hand sanitizer, I already have 16 one gallon bottles, that's one per school. Of course, you think of a gallon, that's not gonna last a long time when people are gonna use it the way, the way we've talked about using. And then we have 12 quart bottles that can be refilled. This is stuff that we ordered back in April that took all summer to get in. So these were things we were just already planning for. I already have 1,000 disposable masks, but our nurses will have masks available in the clinics through Labaner. They will be providing some of those and then we'll still be getting some more. Mr. Turner?
Ms. Sherry?
Yes, sir.
Going back to the hand sanitizer, you said one gallon per school?
For now. I said, in, out of those 16, no, we, we've got more coming.
Really? The virus spread designation, who, is the CDC making that call? Who makes the, the low modern and high virus spread designations? The press grant, right?
Yes, we've asked that question too.
So who determines how we move in that grant?
We're thinking, it has to come from the governor's office or the CDC or somebody much higher than us, because we've asked that to Kevin Morris with the Health, he's our epidemiologist, because we said that at what point, you know, right now we're in moderate spread. So at what point do we, are we considered high spread again? But I'm sure that's, that's a much higher determination, it's not even local health.
So nobody in our school system is making that decision? I mean, everything we've heard thus far, that, that is not, that does not come from us. That, that is designated by the State Health Department, both through the local Health Department, CDC, whomever, to us as far as when those, when those times change. We don't determine that.
Just to be clear, we can't go back to a five day school, five, five day week for students until we're classified as low? Is that correct?
No, moderate low. No, we can't be high risk and be in, but we could be, we could go back to.
And still go five days.
If we're practicing the proper, you know.
Social distancing.
Doing everything we can to avoid, yes.
If we're moderate, can we put one, one kid in a seat on the bus?
Probably. Especially if they're family members and they're all wearing masks.
And they're wearing masks.
Yes, sir. And like I said, you know, because we're, everything's fluid and, you know, we could get something passed down from the governor or somebody else that says, hey, we have a new rule now. But according to what we know right now, yes.
I think you said we had nine new cases this week?
Correct. That, well, that was what, that was numbers you gave me this morning. Now, it'll probably change after like two o'clock.
Nine new cases in one day.
What is it now?
We're at 674 confirmed cases, 169 applications. And you were just asking.
How many new ones?
12 new ones.
12 new ones.
Yeah, six deaths. Six, yeah, six.
Yeah, I, I got the stuff from yesterday because the new stuff doesn't come out till after 2:00 every day, so.
Yeah, the numbers I gave you were from what I got this morning from yesterday.
Okay.
Do we have an idea of someone to have a temperature? How many kids, what's the percentage of kids that have a temperature or have COVID-19?
The percentage of students?
Yeah, do you have an idea?
I have no idea. And we know that a lot of people who have COVID-19 don't run fever at all. So taking a temperature is just one safety measure that we can do, but.
Are two big indicators for our kids, headache and diarrhea? Those are two that the epidemiologists was talking about.
We have a, how many hospitalized public cases that we have in Tipton County?
In 33, less, yesterday.
Those, yeah, those are not hospitalized here at Baptist Tipton.
Parker, I talked to Parker Harris yesterday, he said they were seeing three to four confirmed cases per week. Now they're seeing three to four confirmed cases per day. And they have an average of about three people hospitalized here in Tipton County, but I heard the number 33, but that's probably, that's a lot of people from Tipton County hospitalized in Memphis.
Ms. Sherry, may I ask you one quick, quick question? Just if you wouldn't mind summarizing briefly, if you don't mind. Based on your research and you're talking with the Health Department and epidemiologists and all these kinds, how do you think COVID affects the children will be having in our schools this year overall? I mean, have you come to, do you have a conclusion? I know it's very controversial.
It is very, and it's different all the time, but I mean, the studies have shown that children are not passing it to each other. Children aren't getting it like adults are. And when they do get it, they're not near as sick. So I mean, I, I'm not gonna say we're probably, I mean, we'll see some cases because, you know, once you put people back together, it's gonna happen. But, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be very proactive in doing what we need to do to keep from other students being exposed as soon as, you know, as, as we can. But they haven't really said that, the local Health Department goes a lot by whatever CDC says. So they're, they're looking at CDC guidelines and then they pass that right on to us, so.
I think the doctor, I, I met with the county mayor yesterday and we were on a webinar with a pediatric surgeon from Labaner and UT Medical where he was, he was great. But one of the things he mentioned was that the biggest spread right now and the biggest issues they're having are between that 20 and 40 age range is what he said right now. That wasn't the case, you know, a while back, but now it's like between that 20 and 40 age range that he was talking about on the webinar. So it's certainly across the board, but that was the, the biggest area of concern they had right now as far as those that were, you know, dealing with.
Thank you.
All right, I'll just get my phone off. First, I wanna thank y'all for serving. This might be a challenging year, so I'm glad y'all are with us and I work with each one of you guys and I appreciate y'all being here. Dr. Combs and his staff have done a, done an extensive job, you can see. Now, just running through, Sherry has purchased, I guess, 960 16 ounce bottles of hand sanitizer and of course, that's gonna go after. And of course, that's going to go out to all the teachers. Today, I placed an order for 42 five-gallon buckets of hand sanitizer. Now, if you'd have told me before March I was going to buy hand sanitizer in a five-gallon bucket, I would have said you was crazy. But, you know, it's just to get started. We have no idea, you know, what's going to transpire out of all this. So we're just trying to amass enough stuff that we have to get started and see which way we're going. But anyways, 42 five-gallon bucket hand sanitizer, kind of, the 100 face shields, I believe they're going to use those in some of our CDC classrooms where they might have a higher propensity to get bodily fluids. Just purchased 42 five-gallon buckets of disinfectant, that's a concentrate. So that's going to make, so we're having, we bought 32 ounce spray bottles. We're going to pass out to all the teachers. So I think it's a quarter ounce for a 32 ounce bottle. So that disinfectant will go a long way. But that's, like I said, again, that's just a start, just to get started. Then 160-ounce hand sanitizers is mobile. Now, purchase this, we're going to mount it, excuse me, we're going to mount these around the schools. And these are disposable. Now, one thing I don't like about it, you got to push the handle to get it, but you can wash your hands right after it. I'd say it's disposable, but the other thing I like about it, we could get it. So this is here, the battery-operated ones, a lot of people I've talked to said they were backordered. I did find a supplier today that has some that he said is supposed to be in at the end of July. So I'm going to purchase about 30 of those tomorrow, be two for each school. We're also getting some metal stands for those to go on so they can put those in the entry points. And they're also mobile, so if they're going to have a ballgame or something, they can actually move that down to the gym or they can move it out to the stadium. So anyway, we're going to do that, so. And the stand, and the stands, actually, they're going to cut in the mascot of the schools and paint them school colors, so that's going to be something. And the schools can actually purchase more of those if they want. We'll see how it works. We do have a new custodial company, Parko, be our custodial company. They are headquartered out of Millington. And a couple of guys that used to work for GCA way back when started their company, Mark Coulter and Jerry Parker. I enjoyed working with those guys. They just started July 1, and they're looking forward to, you know, tackling this. I, I don't know that they were really waiting for COVID to happen when they took over. But, you know, we're going, we're going to be ready and see what we need to do. I believe Dr. Fisher talked about feeding the kids in the classrooms. That's going to create a monstrosity pile of garbage. If you know anything about styrofoams, like a memory foam mattress, you can press it down and it presses right back out. So it's going to, it's a lot of volume. So the custodians are going to have to pick it up in the morning time as well as at lunch and get that out to the dumpsters. Now, back in 2011, when y'all hired me to come up here, I ordered garbage. Now, it sounds like an exciting job, I know. Everybody wants to order garbage. And I got rid of a lot of dumpsters that we weren't using. Well, we saved a lot of money over the years, you know, about eight-yard dumpster, $2,000, $2,000-something dollars a year. So we got rid of about 12 dumpsters up there, so we saved a lot of money. Well, we're going to have to add at least an extra day this year. So it's going to cost just increased garbage cost. Hopefully, we can get by with just adding an extra day pickup at all the schools. About $30,000 increase. Garbage is a big business, so hopefully, we can do that. We'll have to see, I mean, we may have to even increase the amount of dumpsters we have to scoop. I hope not, but it costs, it's, it's cost a lot of money. Sherry stressed that I'm going to speak with each school at the beginning of the year, and we're going to stress hygiene. The number one thing a kid or anybody can do is wash their hands with soapy water and thoroughly wash their hands. I'm concerned about using all this hand sanitizer and whatever else. But it is good to have in a pinch, but we really need to stress that thorough hand washing. So something we're really going to, you know, hit after. And we've been doing it for years, but, you know, another time we need to really stress it. Jeff brought up, Jeff Moore's brought up about PermaSave. Now, he said it was a minimal cost for buses. It is, and it's an extraordinary cost if you do the whole school system. But we, we think it's really a no-brainer to try to use on the school buses. And the only thing about it, you know, he said that after three years, it's 97.7% kill rate on germ stuff, not necessarily COVID. I will go back to say the disinfectant that we're using is to, actually does kill the coronavirus, so that, that's a good thing. The PermaSave, it's this two-step process. The first step does kill the coronavirus. The second step is like an ironing bond that somehow kills the germs after that. That's a little bit above my head on that. I'm not a great scientist, but anyways, I think that's something they're certainly going to do on the school buses, and we may wind up doing that on the desk and whatever. Or maybe the whole classroom, just depends on, I'll talk with Dr. Combs more about that. See what we're going to do with that. But anyway, I think that's what I got. If you have any questions, I should try to field them.
Did you talk about the last vote for it?
I probably didn't. We're working with maintenance to retrofit water fountains. Sherry came up with, we have everybody calling us, and they want us, they want to sell us these spilling stations. They're anywhere from $700, $800 to $1,200. Well, you know, per station. Dr. Fisher said we were going to retrofit our water fountains and discourage the use of the, this ficking. Sherry found something, we can put in the water fountain, it's like a hook. And it, you know, you take your water bottle up there and, you know, hit it and water goes in. So we're going to try to use those to begin with and, and it'd be more cost-effective, actually. So anyway, is that the one you were talking about?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I missed that. I'm wearing a pair of glasses, still missed it. I, I'll go first.
All right. Dr. Fisher, again?
Yes, sir. I think Ms. Peggy is going to come at this time to topple that we have the emergency leave COVID.
If I ask one question before we proceed.
Sure.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
This is for spare. And I forgot, a parent had said something to me. You have a child that has to have OTPT or any of those things, speech, and they're keeping them at home, will they have to bring them up here once a week? Or you go, since you're doing stuff online, y'all going to do stuff online? What are you going to do so they can hear it on this? Y'all decided not to apologize, I should have asked.
We're kind of looking at a mixture. I mean, we, we're looking at the stellar, the Medicaid reimbursement that we're looking into. They have a platform, but we've also talked about what the speech pathologist is doing Zoom. But that goes to if the children have Wi-Fi. So, but we are looking into kind of a multitude of things. If it's possible, if the kids could come in, it's going to really be an IEP team decision. They, I mean, it's just, it's going to be whatever the IEP team decides. But if the kids could come in and we could make it a safe place for them in a room, because our OTPT is in a room separate anyway. They're not in the classroom, so it's a separate place in the building, but, or it was. I hope it's still in.
That's the plan.
That's the plan anyway. But anyway, that, it's just going to be based on IEP and each individual. But we are, that has been thought of many, many times. Thanks, sir.
Good question.
It's a great question.
All right. I want to make sure that we try to adopt a leave of absence form that we call the FF-CRA. Every building, this colored sheet that you have that tells employee rights, that's posted in every building. It tells the employees in a nutshell exactly what they're eligible for, full-time as well as part-time. Every person who works has these same rights. But in order for us to do what our obligation is, we have to have a new form. We have a regular leave of absence form, but we now have to have an FF-CRA form for leave of absence that has to do with COVID. So if you look at that form, it tells us at the top what it is and why it was provided. Then the paid leave entitlements, those entitlements are laid out the same way that the employee rights are on that colored sheet. They're exactly the same. So there's no discrepancy in what they read in the building and what they see on form. We have had this approved by the lawyer to make sure that we're following the guidelines that we're supposed to. There are three reasons that you can claim up to 10 paydays. Those are one, two, and three. You've either been told to isolate or quarantine by government agency or told to isolate or quarantine by a doctor or you're experiencing symptoms of COVID. You have to fill in the form and you have to tell us who told you that. Then the other piece, four, five, and six, those are two-thirds pay for those areas. And that's if you are caring for somebody with COVID or if your child can't go to school because their school is closed due to COVID. So everything is connected to COVID. This is only supposed to last until December 31. Hopefully, that's, that'll be the end of it. But I don't know, it may have to be extended. But right now, we just need you all to approve this form for our FF-CRA leave of absence.
Do we have a motion to approve the form presented by Ms. Peggy? Motion by Mr. Shipley, second by Mr. Davidson, are there any questions? I have questions. Would you, now, forms, they're great, right?
Okay.
I know. Okay, can you put it, for teachers out there watching, right now, can you put in layman terms what the policy is for teachers who have to quarantine?
For teachers who have been told by a government agency or by a doctor.
Whoa, excuse me, let me interrupt. The reason I ask that is because a bunch of teachers are concerned about their sick leave.
I understand, I understand. And that's what this employee rights gives, gives you 10 days if you have to isolate or quarantine. But it's specific, and the, and the legal piece is that a government agency has told you, which we're taking that as the health department, or a doctor has told you to isolate or quarantine, or you're having symptoms and you're waiting for a diagnosis. So that could be that you're waiting for a COVID test. It could mean that you're waiting for a strep test, you know, depends on what it is. But everything on here is related to COVID, nothing else. But if you have COVID symptoms and you go to the doctor and the doctor tells you to go get a test, then you can start working on these 10 days that they have given you that are paid days. So they don't have to use their days, but they have to go by the guidelines. So if they are waiting on a test result, waiting for it to be determined whether they're negative or positive, from the date of the test until they've determined, then those days are covered. But it can't be, you know, used for anything else. You know, strictly, this is an FF-CRA. We have a leave of absence form for other things, you know, like we always have. But this is specifically related to COVID. It was created for that.
Now, if they're quarantined but don't have COVID, right? If they're quarantined and at home.
10 days.
Will they be required to do something at home?
Well, the, the law says that they could, if they could do telework or distance learning, then they should do that. So if they're, you know, many people are quarantined and they're perfectly healthy. So they could continue to do that. And I think, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I feel like Dr. Combs has told the principals, you need to have a plan so that if they're home, and most of the teachers are going to want to keep on working. They're not going to want to sit at home and let their kids just have nothing. So they're going to be involved, I think. I think our teachers are going to be eager to try to make this year work. So if they're at home and able to direct on Edge Annuity or Odyssey Ware, whichever piece they're on, I, I don't see that that would be a problem. I, I don't know what we can, it, it depends on how they feel. You know, obviously. And only they can determine that. I can't determine that.
You know, since you, since you mentioned that, and this may not have anything to do with what you're talking, and I appreciate your answer, Ms. Peggy, but before I forget about it because I'm old, are we going to have a problem with substitute teachers this year, do you think?
If we have a problem with substitute teachers, they're going to have a problem with them all across the area.
That's correct.
So, but, so my answer is, I hope not. I mean, they are aware that we may need them in some of these situations. But, you know, that's hard to predict at this point. We, we hope not. We've, you know, they're, they're loaded and ready to go. But it depends how many across this whole area that we share with a lot of different areas, so. But we, I mean, we hope not. I know they've been put on notice that, you know, we're going to need them as other districts have put them on as well, so I hope not.
Do substitutes get the training?
Yes. Yeah, we'll, we'll probably make that a part of the, right now, there's a substitute training, like handbook and those things that they get. A lot of this will be added to that process so they get that same training. We usually just give that to Kelly Services and they can probably take care of that with their own employees. But absolutely, they'd be trained on the same stuff. Yeah. That's, that's a hard question to answer because I don't know. Yes, they're aware that that's going to be an issue and they're working towards that. But I can't predict it, you know.
Another question from Ms. Peggy. I kind of want to. Okay. So the funding for this leave will not come out of our normal budget?
Yes, it will. There is no other budget.
This will come out of our normal budget. So another one of the bureaucrats saying you got to provide this with no funds to do it.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All those in favor, let it be known with saying aye. Those opposed, no, motion passed. Thank you.
Okay, the last round.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to approve our reopening plan as stated here tonight. And we also need a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 calendar with the noted changes.
Let's talk to Parko first. The plans to reopen do have a motion to approve it presented tonight. Motion by Mr. John, second by Mr. Vincent. Any questions? I don't have a question, but I have a statement. I'd like to say, I think you've done a very good job. And of course, you're not going to, with a system like this, nobody's going to be happy with what we're going to do. But I do appreciate the different options that is in this program. Parents and, and they have a different option for doing it. I think it's a good program. I mean, I think it's a good start. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, the motion let it be known with saying aye. Those opposed, no, motion passed. The next motion will be approved of the new calendar, revised calendar for the 20, 20, 21 year. Do we have a motion for that? Motion by Mr. Davidson, second by Mr. Farrell. Any questions on the new calendar? I have a question about that. Did you summarize?
The calendar?
Right. The changes to the selling. Would you mind for our viewing audience?
Dr. Combs? I'm going to have to hurry for my email. Here, here it is. Here, I have it. Well, I'm going to go to the email. You do have it in your package.
Right, right. And email. Yes, we got an email.
That's what I was going to refer to, was the email.
Basically, it's just, this staggered days.
The staggered days, the stockpile days, yes.
Yes.
So we.
And then services for the teachers to get ready.
So the, the days that we moved the start of school back will be used for in-service days. We are using three stockpile days on that. When we totaled up the days, we have to have 180 instructional days and 200 teacher workdays. So we had to add distance learning on three of the breaks. And our plan will be, Mr. Vincent, to, I believe the three days were added on, for distance learning, the Monday of fall break, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, Thanksgiving break, and the third one.
Was it just those two?
Is it just those two? Okay. Oh, and January the 4th had to be added. It was originally an in-service day, now it's an instructional day. So the, our plan for those will be on that Friday that teachers will.
So the, our plan for those will be on that Friday that teachers will send home a packet of work for them to do at home.
Students.
For students to do at home. And that's how, we will use those as distance learning days. The state will allow us to do that. Is that a good enough sample?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor for the revised calendar motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion passed.
All right, Mr. Morris, I have Mr. Morris, who's going to share some transportation information, I'll leave some bids, and I also have Mr. Barnett, the future sewage project.
Thank you. Changing directions here. I think you all received in your packets the summary of the bids that we received on our contracted services. If you'll look at the top of the page, if you all have it, for drug screening, we only received one bid from Fidelity Search. They've been doing our drugs and alcohol screenings for several years. Drug screening cost is $28 and the alcohol screening is $10 each. And we go above and beyond, of course, with our drug screening, and they do a fine job with us in that, so. That's my recommendation, that we go ahead and move forward with Fidelity Search for a drug screening contract.
Do we have a motion on Mr. Morris's recommendation of Fidelity Services for the drug screening? Motion by Mr. Clark, second by Mr. Farrell. Any questions on this? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion passed.
Next, you'll see the DOT fiscals. We received two bids to perform the DOT fiscals. One is from Easily and Delonas Family Medicine at $60, and that does include the $10 for the ear analysis. Their total is 60. And then we received a bid from St. Francis Medical Partnership, Rosemary Jacobs, at $74. And Easily and Delonas has been performing our DOT fiscals for quite a while, so.
I'll make a motion to approve Easily and Delonas. Motion by Mr. Clark. Second by Mr. Clark. Are there any questions? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion passed.
Next up is our towing services. Jim's Towing is the only business that we received a bid from. They've had our towing contract quite a, quite a while. Again, they've done a good job of responding when we're in need, so bring that before.
Heard the recommendation of Jim's Towing for the towing services. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Davidson, second by Mr. John. Any questions? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion passed.
And next is our tire bids, and there are two packages that we requested bids on. One is for our new tires, which we requested the Michelin 11R 22.5 XZE2 16 ply 2230 seconds. We had three companies who bid the correct tire that we are, that we put on our buses to be consistent with what, what comes with our new buses. So we've got three prices. Hub City was 361 plus their mounting and balancing was additional 20. We've got Stapleton at 366 with an additional 25, mountain balance, and Quality Tire, which is locally here in Tipton County, 366, and their mount balancing is also 25. So it's not a lot of difference in the tires. Hub City, just for information purposes, and Stapleton Tire located in Jackson, Quality Tire is here in Tipton County. We've been using Quality, I think, for the past three years now.
Would you save your money in travel?
Well, we don't have to travel, they bring them to us. The, the only advantage I see is, is Quality being within our county lines, you know.
And that's where you've been using them.
Right. We've, we've actually used all of these in the past, Quality, when the last three years, I think, and then previously, we were using Hub City. But they all provide good service, but I would, you know, I like to see our money within the county.
I agree. Is that the form of a motion? Second by Mr. Clark. Any questions about the bid? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion passed.
The second part of our tire bid is the re-treading, and you can see the prices there. What we've been using is the Marangoni Seamless Tread. Hub City had a bid of 184. We did not get the exact bid from Stapleton, it was 17620, and the Marangoni from Quality Tire is 177. So it would be my recommendation to continue to use Quality on the re-treads as well. We've had good, good success with them.
Motion by Mr. Farrell to use Quality Tire on the re-treads, second by Mr. John. Any questions? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion passed.
Okay, last one we have is on our fuel. This year, we only had one bid from Wood and Oil Company, and you can see the prices per gallon. We're basically on a tanker diesel, we're paying four cents above rack price. On a bau truck, on both diesel and gasoline, 10 cents above rack price. And they are wonderful of taking care of us on getting fuel. When we're, when running low, we can give them a call and they're here, so.
I'm going to ask you a quick question about that. How do those prices compare to previous years? Because I know we had a, it's, the oil price of oil went down.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're a lot lower. I mean, they're a lot lower, yeah. We, we saw that through the, through this year. You know, we were spending a lot less, Ms. Peggy can attest to that. We, we are able to take a few of them. You know, one of the advantages of being out of school was the fact that we saved some money in fuel. We were able to buy two buses out of that. So that's kind of helping us out in this year's budget because, you know, we're in uncertain times, so that's really, that really helped us out. But yes, we, we've saved money in, in fuel throughout this year, plus, you know, with those couple of months out of school, kind of helped us out with that budget as well, so.
I'll make a motion we approve Wood and Oil. Motion by Mr. Vincent, second by Mr. Farrell to approve Wood and Oil as the fuel vendor. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion passed.
Mr. Morris?
Yes, sir.
How many tires do we buy a year?
It'd be hard for me to tell you an exact number. Probably 300, 400, probably, somewhere in that ballpark. But that's probably a ballpark.
How many buses we run in a, in a normal year?
We've got 171 buses in our fleet. Of course, not all of them run a daily, but we've got close to 150 that run every day. So, and that's, I, I do, I'm sorry.
That's two tires a bus a year?
Yeah, right. I do want to just bring you a point of information. We, we signed a, a contract where we're tying into the county radio system that the sheriff's department, the municipalities, the fire departments all use, and we're going digital with our bus radios. So we're finally going from analog to digital. You know, it's past time to do that. And we're also incorporating GPS in with this on our buses. So we'll be able to locate and know where they are at any time. And another good point of this, and, and this is going to take a little work to get it done, but with our transportation software that we have, they're going to be able to tie in together where eventually a parent's going to be able to download an app on their phone if they want to know when that bus is going to arrive at their house. They can log, you know, touch, touch that app and they can see when that bus should arrive at their house. It will not show where that bus is for safety reasons, but it will show when that bus is expected to arrive at their residence. So that's a.
We're going all tech, Mr. Chairman.
We're finally moving up.
Staying out the code and that's along the way on the road.
That's right, and we're getting, going to be able to get rid of the repeater, right?
Right, right.
The repeater that's on the water tower at Bryce, that repeater and the, and the housing at the base of it that, that powers that.
Right, and we, we have trouble with that.
Be able to get away with that, we're not going to need it.
Quite a bit. And one of the good things is, we can communicate anywhere in this county. If they're down on the river bluff, we can hear them. Now we can't. I mean, they have to, sometimes they have to stop the bus, call us on the phone, and sometimes they don't have self-service. Well, now we can communicate with them, so.
You said it was kind of tied in with Sheriff's Office, so would that give them access to emergency assistance if they needed it?
I'm not 100, I, I'm not going to say yes because I can't tell you that 100% sure that's got to be approved. They're 911, the 911 board has given us approval to go ahead with everything. But I don't know that they'll give us direct access to the sheriff's department directly. They may give us to, they might be able to do it to dispatch. They may be able to do that, but we'll find that out as we go. Hopefully, it, it would be if they were in, in an emergency situation where they had time.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. I have that. We've got Mr. Martin Hall to talk about a sewage eagle.
The city of Monford has contacted us, and this has been in their works a long time. They want, they want easement, us to grant them an easement in Monford Middle School on the north side, which sits 1,374 feet, and then a portion of the east side, which is 450 feet. There are new subdivisions going in over on McGlaughlin and Doctor's Drive in front of the high school, really. I think it's about 200 houses and this is needed just for that.
We, we walked it, we went out with the city planner and, and number of them, and Mr. Barnett and I walked that whole area. I took a bunch of pictures I can send you too, and it looks, it looks all fine.
The easement is 15 feet, and then the temporary easement while they're building it is 15 feet, additional feet, which will go away after it's completed.
Do we have a motion to approve the request from Monford for this eagle? Motion by Mr. John, second by Mr. Shipley. Are there any questions? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, no, motion passed.
I'm done.
Dr. Fisher, is that your question?
In no way.
That's got to be a record. Fisher has to take.
And I do realize what time it is. It's not like I can't read the clock, so I'm going to go as quickly as possible. So the first thing I need you all to do, I'm sorry, is to, Brighton High School has, would like us to approve a contract that, you don't have a copy. It was 18 pages, I decided you probably didn't want it, but I've got a copy if anybody wants to read it. It's just a standard contract that they are going to sell Pepsi for the next five years, and they need you to approve it because it's a contract. They did a bid process and everything, so they were on target for all that.
Motion by Mr. Clark, second by Mr. Davidson. Any questions? Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no, motion passed.
Thank you. All right, and then on our new budget, when our new budget went to the county court, there were a couple of changes. So you've got a packet of our financial report. The first one is on Fund 177. There were some things that we wanted to get done that we couldn't get done. Our original amount for the recommended 2021 expenditures was going to be $509,77. We changed that to 819,765. So you can see that change there. The county commission is going to get this number instead of the old number, and WT was gracious enough to just plug it in there for us. So it's a different number. That's how much money we have left in that construction fund, 819,765. So I think you need to approve 177 all by itself.
Do we have a motion to approve 177 as presented? Motion by?
Ms. Ross.
Ms. Ross, yeah, I'm sorry. I went right there for a moment, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shipley. I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Ross. All of the, are there any questions? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, no, motion passed.
All right, then the next page, if you'll turn once. I starred the places that were changed when this budget went to the finance committee. They changed our numbers. So the one that is starred, they've changed our property taxes to a lower number and then added more to our local option sales tax, which gave us an excess of $78,000 in revenue. They did not want me to apply that 78,000 in the expenditure line. So if you'll turn the page, you'll see where our new total for estimated revenues is 83 million 467. That's $78,000 more than it was. Turn the page one more time and you can see that we have 78,000 excess and we'll have to approve that. That, that was changed by county commission, so we just have to make sure that we are making ours like what they have applied for us.
Do we have a motion to approve the change? Motion by Mr. Davidson, second by Mr. Clark. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion passed.
And the reason for that is because of the property tax that has been adjusted or reassessed, and so there was less property tax that was going to come in, and they believe will have more local option sales tax, so that's a good thing as well. So anyway, we ended up with $78,000 more projected revenue. Whether we get it all or not, I can't speak. So then the next one, this is, you know, Dr. Combs gave you what we were going to do with all of the CARES Act money, and this is our amendment to be able to spend the CARES Act money. So at the top, the only column you need to look at is the center column. That's the one with all the CARES Act money in it. So the revenue is going to come in that ESR money on 47,301, and we received $1,009,593.21 and 99 cents. So that was additional dollars that have been added, has been added to our budget. And then in 7,100, you can see where those expenditures are. Other salaries and wages has 88.50, and then social security and retirement to cover that 88,000. Unemployment and Medicare, all of that is for personnel. Then instructional supplies, $6,663. Then the textbooks that we've heard so much about, consumables, so that we're able to take them home and work when they're at home, $1,047,940. And then some software expenditures, $223,635. And on the regular instructional equipment, $513,469. For a total in the instructional budget increase, $1,802,274. And if you'll turn two more times, the, the rest of that $1,0959 is in technology, and I believe that is for switches.
Switches and to utilize that our new 10 gigabit internet.
Okay. Okay, in order for us to, to do all we've got to do to expand our technology, technology has to take care of that, and the cost for that was 157,000, so that came out of the CARES Act money, which was great to have that there as well. So you can see the bottom line on the next page, page four. You can see that our total estimated expenditures and revenues will be, for the federal budget, will be $7,771,467.64. Any questions on that? And we will need to approve that amendment.
Do we have a motion to approve the amendment as presented? Motion by Mr. Farrell. Second by Mr. John. Ms. Morris, all those, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Dr. Thomas, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I just want to say thanks as usual for your support. I want to give a big shout out to our team that put together this thing. You know, I was just telling somebody the other day, this isn't something we just threw together, y'all know that. You've had it for a while, I'm unable to look over it. And this is the culmination of a lot of research and, and, you know, we are well aware that it's not going to make everybody happy, but it's a plan that we think we can work with and it's flexible. And to continue on that goal, we'll try to get everybody back in school as, as soon as, you know, this pandemic allows us to do so. So we're looking forward to that. I also want to give another shout out to Technology for live streaming this form. I just asked him a couple of days ago, and he made sure we got online so everybody could, you know, could see the plan and get to hear what's going on. So thank you, Kevin, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Kevin, for doing a great job. I don't want to be in the hall of the, except for.
Right on, we end up all the central office staff, Dr. Combs, and all that, all the way to the bottom. I'm talking about, this is a great plan. I've heard about other systems not approving their plans because they're, we're not up to par, but if this doesn't work, hey, move right on. Tweet it and move right on, because it looks good.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to add anything?
Dr. Combs is giving a lot of shout outs, so I think he needs a shout out.
He does.
Dr. Combs shared with us his response about public monies going to different educational facilities, and the point that I appreciate, Dr. Combs, is that wherever the public money goes, the expectations, such as testing and all the other requirements, should follow that money wherever it goes, and I really appreciated that comment, Dr. Combs.
Thank you. May I ask, may I ask one other thing of Dr. Combs?
No.
Dr. Combs, you know, you know I don't like putting you on the spot.
Whatever.
Okay, but I got one last thing to ask. I think all the planning has been awesome, everybody's working really hard, losing sleep, everybody, all that kind of stuff. But I was wondering, I know there are a lot of teachers out there are concerned about their health. A lot of parents are concerned about their children's health, and I know our plan, and we, we can only do what we can do, and it's uncharted one. But I was wondering if you had, from your gut, a motivational summary as far as teachers' and students' health that you'd like to give everybody?
At the very beginning, Mr. Vincent. No, I'll say this. I mean, our, our number one goal, like I said, is to get everybody back in the building, but we want to do it as, as safely as possible. You know, we obviously want to get our kids instruction. They missed out on at least two months of it at the end of last year. We need to get them caught back up, but at the same time, just like that pediatric study that I talked about earlier, our kids need to get back in the normalcy of a routine, being with their peers, being in the building, interacting, all that. I'm really worried about that. And honestly, I've heard from a lot of teachers who've given a whole lot of great shout outs too about that they can't wait to get back in that classroom and get with their kids, whether it be via distance or whether it be in that classroom, they're ready to get back teaching those students. I mean, that's, you know, that's what they were, that's what they were educated to do, and that's what a lot of them were born to do, and they can't wait to get back with those kids. And I really appreciate those comments, because, you know, this isn't one of those things that you just fall into, you either love teaching kids or you don't want to even touch it. And, and these folks love teaching kids, and I'm, I'm ready to get them back in that arena.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?